Before we start, because we're in a new venue for people, the restrooms are right out the hallway over here. The public participation will be taken at that microphone over there. Our presenters tonight is MKSK, and they're a master plan consultant. They'll be presenting and taking questions or comments or anything like that. So, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
All right, we'll call it to order at 7:03, and start with roll call. Jill?
Jill Inberg.
Gail Linden.
Rick Boland.
Blake Moore.
Chris Kombiasky.
Mike Wright.
And I think nothing else to review other than to hand it over to MKSK.
At this point in time, yes, that would be correct.
All right, is this on? I guess it is on, okay.
You're gonna have to speak up, because that goes into the recording, not into the...
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Anne Marie Kirby with MKSK. I'm the project manager for the master plan update. Tonight, joining me as well is Brad Strader from MKSK. And we, this is our first time meeting you in person. I think a few of you were at the community planning workshop that we had in June, but it's nice to see everybody. So for this evening, we are going to be going over revisiting the top outcomes of the master plan process.
There's a request for you to speak up a little bit if you can.
Okay. Maybe it's easier if I take off...
We don't have amplification in this room, I don't think.
We do now.
That's not amplifying, it's just recording.
The microphones are only to be recorded.
Okay. Is it easier if I just take off my mask, or do you want me to keep it on?
If you're comfortable, sure.
Might be a little easier. Okay. So for this evening, we're gonna be going over the top outcomes of the master plan process, and looking at the project schedule where we're at in the planning process, and then giving you an overview of the summary of engagement. So we've engaged the community a few different ways since we last met with you in May. And then we'll be going over the draft recommendations for the master plan, including transportation, future land use, and redevelopment opportunities. We're also gonna give you an update on the DEI plan progress, and then go over some next steps with you. And just so you know, for this evening, we're gonna have a few stopping points for discussion along the way, so I'll just kind of note those, and then we can kind of stop and discuss with you different options for things that are gonna come up. So it's kind of an informal working session, which is, it's intended to be. So you've seen this before. These are the top outcomes for the master plan, meeting criteria for RRC by working closely with MEDC. Elizabeth King is the MEDC liaison for you guys, and unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight, but we've been talking with her closely, and we will be making sure that she gets the recommendations and the draft plan, and giving her input to us. And then also housing diversification plan, which will demonstrate where alternative housing might be located, and where it might be appropriate, and what's realistic and desired by the community. And then sustainability and green infrastructure opportunities, as well as redevelopment opportunities for the commercial corridors, and then again coordinating with the diversity, equity, inclusion plan process. And then, just as a reminder, the master plan recommendations are all kind of grounded in best practices, the MEDC/RRC criteria, our knowledge and expertise, and then the feedback from the community. So this is the project schedule. Right now, we're beginning kind of phase three, which is halfway through the process, and we're developing those recommendations. After this working session, we will continue drafting the master plan, and then come back to you sometime in November to present the draft master plan to you, combined with a public workshop, so the public and you guys can see that draft plan, and then provide your input. And then the last phase is those public hearings with Planning Commission and with City Commission. So since we last met with you in May, we have engaged the community in a few different ways. In June, we held a community visioning workshop where residents came out and provided their input. We had several different stations set up here at the rec center, and included topics related to the goals of the previous plan, transportation, housing, redevelopment opportunities, the campus area, city campus area site. Over 100 people came to the meeting, so we thought that was a pretty, pretty good turnout. And then we also had, in July, and in coordination with the DEI plan, they also had a survey. We released that survey in July, and it was open for about three weeks. And that was an online survey, but we also provided it as a paper survey. And we had over 560 people respond to that. So that was a really, really great feedback on that. And both of those opportunities for input provided similar questions and prompts for feedback for priority improvements for the city. So I'm gonna go over those, the summary of those, in a minute here. So overall, we wanted to know what the top priority improvements are for the city, and here we just listed some of those top answers that were provided. Respondents could choose up to three options out of 10 that were listed, and then they could also provide their own answer here. The top responses included stormwater management and increased sustainability, which is also kind of interrelated to each other. Maintaining roads, this is something we see in questions asked like this all the time in many communities, so road maintenance was not a surprise here. And then parks and recreation opportunities. It was also noted as a top priority for Huntington Woods. And again, this is something that the community really values, so that was not a surprise And then we asked what the top three goals are from the current master plan. And I believe there were about seven or eight goals total. These were the ones that were listed as the top three. Not to say that the other ones won't be included, but we wanted to kind of see what the people's top priorities were. Maintaining city services without tax increases, maintain and improve park and rec facilities, and then promote the long-term stability of residential neighborhoods. In addition to that, we also asked what other goals people would like to see as part of the plan update that aren't currently listed. And people noted that diverse housing, pedestrian improvements like crosswalks, and multimodal improvements, as well as safety, came up among other topics. So the bigger the text that you see in that word cloud, the more times it was mentioned. And then another element we wanted to get feedback on were the transportation priorities. And we asked people how they most frequently travel throughout Huntington Woods. So keep in mind, people could select more than one option here. Almost everyone indicated that they walk, and then almost half indicated that they frequently bike around Huntington Woods. And then we had follow-up questions asking about improvements related to those modes of transportation. So installing new pedestrian crossings at key intersections and locations was a top answer to address how the city could be more pedestrian-friendly. And then having bike lanes on major routes was a top answer for how Huntington Woods could be more bike-friendly. And then we asked what other types of housing people would like to see in the city. And note on the bottom here that 35% like the way the city is currently. For the others, people could select more than one option. So that's why you see more than 100% noted here. The remaining portion selected townhomes, mixed-use buildings, and housing for seniors as their top answers for things that they would like to see for housing in Huntington And then along similar lines, we wanted to gauge what types of uses people would like to see along the commercial corridors and clusters. Restaurants, retail, and mixed-use buildings were the top answers for all of the areas, Woodward, 11 Mile, and Coolidge. So this is one of the kind of stopping points that we'd like to discuss further. When we last met with you, we discussed the city campus area and potential options for moving the site forward, and we also asked the community the same question. Their responses back were sort of across the board. There wasn't really a strong definitive answer. The more common ones were upgrading the public safety building or leaving the site as is. We wanted to come back to you to ask you what kind of options you would like to pursue for this. Relocating DPW and sharing with another city, rehabbing, upgrading the public safety building. Another option that isn't really listed here, but kind of goes with option one, which is selling part of all of city campus site for reinvestment, is developing an RFP, a request for proposal, for developers to kind of gauge their interest. It's sort of like an initial step for option one, just to see if there is any interest for that site, and what those options could potentially be, so they could create some concepts that you could look at to see if there's some sort of investment opportunity there or not. So that is a potential option that goes with option one that's listed there. So I'm kind of gonna open up to you guys to see what your thoughts are.
Mr. Chair, because of how the format that this is laying out in, my suggestion would be is that when there's stopping points for commission response, that you also take public participation at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, let's, I guess, let's start there. We'll open up for public participation. If you could step up to microphone and state your full name and address, we'll just take them one at a time. We are gonna limit public participation to three minutes per person, so... Jay, it looks like you.
Good evening, everybody. Jay Schwartz, 56-year resident of the woods right now. I have several concerns about the data that was gathered. For instance, I'm gonna use this as an example, that a certain amount of people do pedestrian or bicycling. Yes, that may have been true for the overall survey, but we have no information, nor does it exist. I'm going to ask a question. Does it exist that that age, that that information is broken down by demographics? Then in other words, how many people by age are actually commuting or doing walking or bicycling? And the reason I ask this is that if you're going to expend the public monies to do, as is further explained here, put in things like bicycle lanes, well, that has an impact upon traffic patterns. So how many people, not just of the select group that answered the survey, but how many people overall, or residents of the city, would make use of that? And what would the impact be upon the overall public transportation? Not just for our city, but keep in mind, 11 Mile and Coolidge and Woodward are all major routes. How does it impact there? So to arbitrarily move forward with reconfiguration of bike lanes, et cetera, on those roads, without that data, from an overall public policy view, is not in the formal interest. Now, if there is data to support that, great, let's bring it forward, and we can discuss it then. That was one of my major concerns so far about the data that, all the data that we've seen here. Not just you have a subgroup, but since it's already been pointed out in prior occasions, and Commissioner Jenks has already made this comment many times at many public meetings, the percentage of senior population in this city is growing, very large, the over-65 percentage. What kind of information is available on them specifically by age group? Because that is going to have an effect upon the plan. So that's my major concern of not only what has been presented so far, but reviewing the slide deck. Thank you.
Anyone else in public?
Hi, I'm Rachel Sormann. My address is 10144 Talbot. I grew up in Huntington Woods, and I live here now with my family that I'm raising here. So, to the point of the bike lanes, I do think that's like huge, needs a ton of research. But to the point about seniors, while that is a growing demographic, it's still a very small percent of the population of Huntington Woods. We have a huge percent of families in our city compared to other cities from the very data that was presented at whatever that meeting was that happened here. And then, in terms of the request for proposals to gauge developer interest, and I might be wrong here, but I feel like that was brought up at that meeting, and it wasn't something people voted for. So I'm sort of surprised to see it, like, I'm hearing it, if that makes sense. I guess when it said selling part of the city campus, I guess I remember that there was like more specific things that it was looking for, and not just that it would be sold to someone for like whatever ideas they had to be done with. Would I call it a...
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jessica Steinhardt. I live at 13333 Winchester. And I just sort of want to express my interest in making sure that there is many opportunities for public comment around the possibility of redeveloping the city campus area, that the intangibles of city identity are taken into account when a decision is made, and also trying to understand what the autonomy is of the city commission and the mayor to move forward with that. I believe that there were steps that had already been previously taken to move parts of city campus over to Berkeley without any community input. So I think it's really critical that this not be the only opportunity for the public to comment on that, and that it be more widely publicized, that that is something that is on the table, so that many, many more people than what you see in the room can be able to express their opinion about that.
Good evening, I'm Haley Thompson. I live at 10804 Vernon Avenue. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate the question to the students. So are there demographic information available from the survey results? To be able, so, okay. That was asked, so can you maybe talk about what kind of background variables we asked about? And what kind of data was involved?
Do I respond? I don't know what the process is.
Why don't we take the public comment first, and then if there's questions, then we'll allow MKSK an opportunity to respond to some of the questions, and perhaps I have some information or input on that as well.
Yeah, I think at the end, whatever you're comfortable responding to, and you're able to today, is fine.
Okay.
Okay. I just wasn't sure formally if I'm supposed to respond, or you have to close out public hearing before.
Till the end, and whatever you're able to, we'll follow up on.
See if there's anybody else.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public participation and start discussion with the board. Jill?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Gail?
I don't have anything at this moment. I would like, as you know, the audience has stated, and looking at the amount of people that we have here, that as we do move forward and doing things, that we do more public information to the residents, not just in an e-blast. At the very beginning, when the surveys were out, we had signs in the lawn telling them the master plan was being updated. With men's club, the auction signs were out there. If it means putting signs in the lawn that says there's a meeting, there's a discussion, I think that the public needs to hear more than just on an e-blast, is my comment, to try to get a better feeling from the residents here at this meeting.
It seems like the idea of redevelopment has a lot of opposition to it, so, and unfortunately, we don't have our commission liaison here tonight, but I think the city commission will ultimately have to answer the question on how we handle the aging buildings and aging infrastructure of the city property. And to the point of citizen input, if it does ultimately go to not redeveloping it and having to fund new buildings for the city, it'll have to go on the ballot, and residents will have the time to vote on that. And perhaps a redevelopment could also go on the ballot.
I think some of the ideas here, so the master plan is broad, and the idea of redeveloping a campus is not something you would have in the master plan. The master plan, as you say, these are ideas that came up, and here are some options. And if you wanted to have the options in the plan, then that's why this process is going on, to say, are these options worth pursuing? And what are the options? That's why we put up the idea of putting in an RFP from developers, because there's a previous plan the city had prepared that showed redevelopment there, that some feel is pretty skeptical, like, I guess I'm one of them, that the developer would pay for that type of development. So one of the ways to see, is there even any interest, is a request for proposal to see, is there really an interest in this, rather than there was some debate at the public workshop, well, the developers would love to buy the site, or they would never buy the site. And rather than different people giving an opinion, if you did an RFP, would say, all right, is there really any interest? What would a developer offer? Would they buy the property? What would they give the city? And then the city council, or the city could decide, is that worth doing? So that was one of the ideas. If this moves forward, that would be one way to get an answer, rather than continue debate. And if the, through the master plan process, there is a strong feeling that we just don't want to do anything, then that could be in the plan, or it's just renovating the public safety building. So that was kind of the idea, to see what the, there would be, you know, action out of the master plan. The master plan would say, this was looked at, here's how it goes in the forward, or it goes in the future, some communities, et cetera. Like Royal Oak, let's do a campus plan as a separate plan, and hire architects and everything, and see what would happen. An RFP would be another thing, so you could identify in the, in the master plan, here are some options for the future, or we don't want to see changes. But the master plan will not say, this is what will happen to the campus site. Play that.
Understood, but I think we have to gauge opposition to even doing an RFP for the site.
Yeah. These are just ideas, if you're interested, and if the planning commission and council are not interested, then the plan would say, there would be no recommendation on the plan.
Did this specific survey question allow you to pick more than one option?
For this one, let me see. I might have to like actually look it up on the computer to see if that was, I think it just, it made you pick one.
It reads like it was in the box of three development options you would support. So if I was reading that, I would put stickers wherever I thought was a good idea.
Because they, right, the people that came to the workshop, and on the survey, they saw the options, so it was pick the option, if you're interested in any of them.
Yeah, I'd have to, I have to go back to see how it was set up in the survey.
So basically, for clarification on this here, you have 16% of those responding that expressed an interest in exploring that. Is that correct, as to how that reads? So out of 100%, only 16% were interested in that.
Correct.
So it shows a very low interest in that particular facet of the master plan, or the proposed master plan. So I think, and I do want to point out that every time we do a meeting like this, there will be an opportunity. And to Gail's point, this wasn't just an e-blast. There was an e-blast, it's on the website, it's in, it's on the city marquees. It's, you know, it was public notice, it was actually published in a newspaper. So I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we try to reach people for this. We obviously would love to pack every meeting with people with great ideas, because we've already had some good comments tonight. So if there's a better mousetrap, we're certainly always willing to listen.
Well, I just wondered if we still had the signs that we put up before that said something about, you know...
Those signs have, they have a different date on them, it's different things we would have to get...
Well, easy enough to cover over. They change the signs all the time for the men's club when they change their dates, and I'd be glad to help do that, you know, or do something, just because, you know, I wonder out of here, how many people were at, we had 600 surveys, and out of the 600 surveys, 18% of the people showed, and they might not have even been the same people, but 18% showed up in the gym to do the stickers. And so then now I'm looking at this number to see how many are here to hear what we're having to say, and I'd like to keep the numbers going up rather than falling down.
Rick, you have a second?
The only other thing, I'd agree with the comment, that if there was something done, depending on bonds or city charter stuff, you would have a vote of the people, but even then, like 40% of the people vote, and, you know, 60% don't in cities, so you're never gonna get 100% statistically significant, no matter what. But these are just generalized numbers. This isn't a scientific survey. It's just input and information from people that are participating.
Before the city sells any public property, there'd be public hearings, and there would have to be a vote of the people, depending on how it's done. So that's, we're a long way...
Pretty long process.
We're a long way away from that.
Even if that 16% was 90%, you would be a long way from the process.
Okay, let's kind of keep moving. Blake?
I have no further comment. I'm just moving back.
I just, really quick, just, to Gail's point, I just got two things that I thought could have helped. This was listed as a special commission meeting, or planning meeting, and the newsletter went out, so I know I missed it, so I went back, clicked on it, and then it said master plan. So like something really simple to fix in the future emails, to just put that on the main email. And then the second thing was when the survey went out, I know that there wasn't a reminder that went out, just like, you know, survey closes today, and just simple things like that, I think what it comes from.
We can talk to our communications department, see if we can get a better job of that done.
I thought they sent out multiple ones.
They did.
Yeah, okay.
Chris?
No further questions for me.
Okay.
Do you want to take any additional public comment on this?
I'm afraid we're gonna be here all night if we keep opening it up and closing it. So we'll open it up again after the next break. Yeah, I have nothing further to add, so we can keep going.
Well, the next break is the next slide. So last time we saw you, we discussed the lot coverage options, which included determining how increasing lot coverage by up to 10% more in some single-family districts would help accommodate home expansion opportunities to create multi-generational living options, provide flexibility for work-from-home options. So as part of the survey and workshop, we asked the community their thoughts on this. Just over half said yes, they support this idea, but it's not an overwhelming amount compared to those who said no, so it's sort of half and half almost. We wanted to use this, again, as another stopping point to kind of talk about those options. I know last time we had talked with you in May, this seemed like something you were interested in recommending in the master plan, but we did want to discuss further, like what that might look like if that's the case, and, you know, should conditions be placed on it, including making sure that stormwater is addressed, and enhancing those sites, maybe having stricter standards if lot coverage is increased. Do we want to, if we're gonna do this, start with just one of the single-family districts as a pilot to see if it's successful, or start with some select lots in one or more of the single-family districts, like targeting corner lots near commercial clusters? So those are some things to think about, rather than just saying, we're gonna do all three single-family zoning districts that we talked about. If there's some kind of more pilot program instead, that could be phased in, if this is something that you're interested in pursuing.
Okay.
And again, this would have to be just, because last time, I think people were maybe a little confused about recommendations versus like actual implementation. Implementation would be changing and updating the zoning ordinance with these options. So even if it's recommended in the master plan, it doesn't necessarily mean that's gonna proceed forward. I just want to make sure people understand that.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up again for public participation. Same drill.
Yes, hello again to all. I just wanted to amplify a couple of things from my prior comments. First of all, a little bit about, just briefly about myself. By both university and career, I am an engineer, so I've done a lot of number crunching in my time. It was also, when we, in engineering, we have, have to go out and look at what's really going on out there in the world. We use a lot of statistics to gathering data. Now, the gentleman has just said that this was not scientific survey, and this concerns me, because what is happening, what may happen, may, not what is, what could be a possibility here, is that this data, because it is not a good scientifically controlled survey, could be misinterpreted, or other actions taken that are unintended, that don't really reflect the views of the community. So I'm not seeking to minimize the work that's gone done here, or is deprecated. It's a good start, but before any decisions whatsoever are made on how to proceed, we really need that formal scientific survey, a formal survey to age, demographics, location in the city, and other questions, in order to be able to say exactly what the views of the community are. Showing up at the community center, perfect, no problem. Doing online, no problem. But we need that extra data in order to really understand what is... But we need that extra data in order to really understand what is or is not going on in the community. So I just wanted, that, that was my major concern here coming out of the presentation. And again, I'm not meaning to deprecate the work that's gone so far. It's a good start. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public to speak?
I, I think this is going to be a really divisive issue as the numbers show. And I think really there needs to be more information on what impact this will have to our storm sewer system because I know in Berkeley, it's a huge issue for them and the lagsides in the proximity of other houses. So I really think like more information is needed on this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to add, like she said, we know.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Susan Considine. I live at 127277.
Thank you.
And I've worked with people in Berkeley who had to deal with monster houses going up next to them. And if it's not planned out well, it can create animosity between neighbors. Also, I lived in Birmingham at a time when houses were being ripped down and big houses going up. There's water issues, there's neighbor issues. So I recommend studying it. And also, I also recommend that you study your stormwater detention rules when any building goes up. Because I'm in a situation now where a, a big monster structure was allowed to be put at the minimum distance to the property line. And then when you don't say permanently where the gutters have to be, the downspouts, somebody can move their downspouts and suddenly somebody else is getting their water. And it's like, you know, the cat in the hat comes back where they just keep moving the pink spot around. And we've had the same thing go on down the street. Where somebody's yard, backyard is fine for years and all of a sudden they're getting flooded out. And it turns out the neighbor put on a new roof and they moved their downspouts to the back. And why not give their water to somebody else? So I think that needs some great attention. And what happens sometimes, then you get neighbors, I hate to say it, but a lot of people don't understand stormwater. And they just think, you know, global warming, where's this water coming from? I've met people who are going to spend thousands of dollars, tens of thousands, solving water problems. And then I look and I say, well, look at that big garage behind you. And it didn't even occur to them that it was coming from elsewhere. So I know that the procedure requires that anytime a new structure go out, you have to analyze the topography of the whole area. So I'd like you to always consider that every block is like its unique, has its own unique geography. And, and also sometimes with the water table. So, so please think about that because it can really create difficult problems between neighbors who otherwise would have gotten along. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close public participation. Chris?
No questions.
Blake?
I mean, I tend to agree with everything you just said. I think that there are some real logistical issues here that haven't really been considered. I mean, you know, proximity to each other, the adjacencies, the houses that actually have, I think, sewers running through the backyards, that probably already arguably compromising that, that adjacency. But my other big concern is that, you know, we, we claim that we want to be a green community. And I, that just, the very notion of sort of making things bigger and more sprawling and expanding into the, the varied areas, it, it just means taking out more trees. It means more covered area. And it's, I think it's inevitably going to create more problems than good.
Thanks, Blake. Rick?
Hank, do you know how often we have a resident come in, and not a developer, but a resident come in and attempt to submit plans for a house larger than what we allow?
Probably about a half a dozen times a year.
Yeah, out of a percentage wise?
I don't have a percentage, but I can tell you that it does happen. And that project will either go through the planning commission and then pass on with the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals, which they would have to get before maximum house size is approved. But there's, no, I don't have a percentage of what it is, but I can tell you we get about a half a dozen plans a year that supersede the code.
Okay. You know, one thing that could be done, following up on that comment, some other communities where we've worked, they require stormwater upgrades. So if you're going to expand, you had, have to put in pervious pavement for your driveway or other things like rain gardens and other things to say, even if you're increasing the footprint, there are things you're going to do that are going to decrease your, your stormwater input. So that'd be one idea. If any of these ideas appeal to the planning commission, I think you could put that in as a caveat. Could be also something you do even with a variance, if you're considering a variance, make that part of a variance.
Absolutely. You could do that certainly with a variance, or as Brad was saying, part of a variance. One of the other things that you could do with this is, is that change the percentage. Like right now, we have only 50% of a rear yard may be able to be covered by structures. Those structures include the garage, if in the backyard, patios, if in the backyard, driveways in the backyard, walkways in the backyard. So we limit the amount of space that you can cover in the rear yard to 50%. We limit the amount of space you can cover overall to 30%. So those are kind of how we're working with that at the present time. What it does is it allows us not to cover over 30% in most zone districts. In the R1A, which is the acres lot, it's 15%. And part of the reason for that is, is that those lot, those lots simply don't absorb water. And then also R1B, which is 25%. So there's differences, there's different areas that have different calculations as to what they could take, what lot percentage they could cover. And the impetus was that, was in trying to understand that what you get is some kind of infiltration rate for rain, stormwater and that, so that it goes in. In the center section of Huntington Woods, which on that map that you see there is predominantly red, you have predominantly clay and water sits. It always has, and unless something changes, it always will. You can't swap out the soils for that. Up in the R1B and R1C area closer to Woodward, that's typically sand. So as a result, they drain faster, much better than other parts of the area of Huntington Woods. Over towards the Coolidge side, where you have R1A lots, that's clay. R1C, which is shown there in the orange, and the R1D, which is still red, also has a lot of clay in it. So the reality of that is, is that you have clay scattered everywhere in Huntington Woods, which is notoriously hard to dig in, doesn't drain well. And one things, there, there are a couple of things that we could do with our building regulations as far as that goes, from including that if you dig something, you have to truck it out, you can't backfill with it and use sand or pea gravel or something to drain through a well for that. And that would certainly help. But that's ordinance change. It's not really something that's going to go in the master plan. So what the master plan is really looking to do is to give a direction to go. And then the ordinances in the planning commission at that point in time and the action items would figure out the, how to get theirs.
Okay.
So maybe the concern of this is less house size and more impervious area coverage?
Yeah. And that's what I heard at the, the workshop as well. When people were concerned, they were, had the same concerns. So that's why we wanted to bring it up tonight.
Well, a while ago too, just, and you all will remember this, we lowered the maximum house sizes. And part of the reason from that was to increase the amount of pervious surface. So part of the way that they got that back was through architectural bonuses and different kinds of bonuses, height bonuses, that type of thing. The possibility exists that you may want to explore a pervious surface bonus to add to that. But these are, again, vehicles to get from point A to point B. I think what they're asking you here for, correctly if I'm wrong, Andrea and Brad, is that, is this something that you want to pursue? If you don't want to pursue this in general, then this all becomes a moot point.
Well, I think we shouldn't tie house lot coverage to stormwater impervious area coverage. So I'd like that if we could split the two up and make them separate issues and then discuss those separately, maybe there's not a lot of interest in house lot coverage.
I think they are tied though, is what people are saying. That if you're increasing.
Well, you could go around where you don't change the lot coverage for the house.
Gotcha.
But you make adjustments to lot coverage for impervious area, required calculations or whatever it might be, or square footage bonuses like Hank's talking about.
For example, Rick, this, this might be to what you're saying. So like if you're saying you have patio, if patio is pavers that drain, you can have more patio than if you have concrete patio that doesn't drain.
Correct.
Something of that nature.
That's all.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know whether I think it's part of the master plan to put lot coverage into the master plan. I truly think that it's something between zoning planning commission and zoning board of appeals. This being my first year, I'm planning and having served many years on zoning board of appeals. I didn't see a lot of people coming for larger, larger houses. Whether this topic came up now to maybe have people try to stay in their homes longer or build a first floor master bedroom where they don't have them. It's typically on the lot sizes that we have right now, not going to be accomplishable anyway on a standard 50-foot lot anyway. So I think that what we need to work with is the impervious, pervious surfaces and dealing with, you know, stormwater and those things with our current system and, you know, whatever else we're doing to the sewers. But I don't know that there's really a need, in my opinion, to put this into the master plan.
Thanks, Gail. Jill?
I actually agree with Gail. I think, I, I don't see the need for it. I mean, I think that in, I think Hank said, what, half a dozen times a year, we're, we're dealing with this. And I think we have procedures in place for variances and whatnot in front of the ZBA to allow for it where necessary. I just don't see a, a significant need to include this in the master plan. I, I also briefly just wanted, it's been said a couple of times about, just like the scientific nature of the survey and the, the sampling that we've had. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, like, we advertise it as much as possible and it's out there. And the people who are interested in responding have responded. It's, I think, impossible to get, you know, 100% participation from the community. I think that's the case in any community. So I, I think we've got to, at some point, move on with the, with the results we have and feel that those who, you know, care enough about it, attend, you know, the workshops or responded to the survey. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, I would say even communities that spend a lot of money on a scientific survey have been often not pleased with it, or people complained that they weren't a part of the survey group and so forth. So communities that had this come up spent $70,000, $120,000 to do a scientific survey. They found the information wasn't that valid because people complained. Or in some places, the, the results weren't either that informative or the public really didn't know what they were voting on because they weren't informed. So I don't think a scientific, scientific survey is, on a master plan, isn't really that valuable.
I, I think I, I agree with, with Jill and Gail. I don't know that this, I think this is definitely something that needs to be addressed. You know, Hank just brought up, you know, a couple of great ideas on, on how. I, I've sat on ZBA for two years and whether or not a house size increase has been the driving force to this, a lot cover. I, I don't think I've been to a meeting where lot coverage didn't come up at some point. So that inevitably leads directly to a drainage conversation. So I, I, I don't know that this needs to be a master plan conversation, but I think it absolutely needs to be a ordinance revision or something along those lines.
So the law does say if you have ordinance revisions, it's supposed to be based on the master plan. That's probably why this was in the RFP to, to look at. And I would have thought for the size of Huntington Woods, six a year is a lot more than I would have actually expected.
What, what we're getting here a lot of, and I don't want to say a lot, but I mean, for a small community like ourselves, it seems like it's a lot, is we're getting tear down new houses. And with that comes a desire for bigger houses. And even though there's cost, you know, there's cost benefits, the city, I mean, obviously get more tax out of whatever, there's also a loss in permeable surface. There's a bigger loss in, you know, stormwater retention. These are things that, you know, we tried to look at with that. So is it for, just for the public and for the planning commission, is it your experience that something like this that we're looking at right here is definitely something that should be in the master plan? And how you get there or how you choose to deal with it becomes a planning commission issue with a zoning ordinance change for that? So if maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit.
You could just talk about this, this is generally to look at, or it could be, let's look at new ways to deal with stormwater and impervious surface or give incentives and with a variance, you could put that in, this is the goal, but the actually ordinance language would be outside of master.
And that's, I, I, I get, is that what I'm getting from the commission?
Well, I, you know, to me, it goes back to, I mean, right, right at the beginning, I think one of the top things that, that people were after here was, yeah, 65% stormwater management. So this falls under that. And, and whether or not it's driven by house size or impervious, you know, people are always trying to expand their patio, even if it's not the house, or put a covering over it. You know, ma- maybe we need to back away, kind of to Rick's point, from, from the house size driving the whole thing and, and just focus more on stormwater management, which then drives conversations about how to, how to do that when it's around a house, or when it's around a patio, or, or when it's how to fix our damn sewers.
So is it the consensus of the planning commission then to say, explore alternative methods for stormwater management?
I think that's fair.
And then at that point, how we get there would come up in ordinance changes or through studies that would find different ways to do that. And we could address that as ordinance changes, but with that statement in the master plan, we now have our go-ahead to do those things. Is that?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, moving away from the water.
All right, so moving on to transportation, back to transportation. So based on what we've heard back from the community, existing issues and where we saw appropriate opportunities for improvements, these are the draft transportation recommendations. We did include some mid-block crossings along 11 Mile. That's something we heard at the workshop. Many people were pointing that out as something they'd like to see. And enhancing mid-block crossings across 696 as well. And then we also show, we do show some bike routes that are existing, like with signage right now, as well as potential new bike routes on this map. And then we wanted to also look at 11 Mile. So one of the recommendations we were making was, right now, we show that 11 Mile is well within the recommended threshold for, to be qualified for lane repurposing. Coolidge, we also looked at and determined that to be over the threshold. So we are not recommending lane repurposing along Coolidge. But for 11 Mile, we would recommend four to three lane reconfiguration and use that extra space for green infrastructure to help address those stormwater issues that we were just talking about. And then also ease pedestrian crossings along 11 Mile. So it would make it easier and safer for pedestrians to cross the street. And so we just have some examples here, and we also show the study that was done with the adjacent communities. And again, this is another stopping point to kind of ask you if you kind of agree with these recommendations? Or, you know, is there anything else that you want to ask about when it comes to 11 Mile? Questions about the lane repurposing?
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up our public participation again? I'm shocked today.
Don't. My only concern about this plan is, number one, that we only control the southern half of 11. Uh, my only concern about this plan is, um, number one, that we only control the southern half of eleven mile road. We do not control the northern half. That's another city. So, what is their input? Is there any input? Have they even approached? If they have, what is it toward reconfiguration of that? Number two, uh, I reiterate the point of what is the impact or would the impact be upon the public transportation? It is a major thoroughfare, an east-west thoroughfare. It's a major bus route. What would be the impact there to the overall, uh, flow of traffic or impede traffic? Uh, how would that work? Uh, there may be, I've heard occasional arguments, and this is anecdotal, concerned about the speed there, that reducing it would cause reduced, uh, would sort of force reduced speeds. That's an enforcement issue. That, that's an, uh, an enforcement thing. It's not a, a, it's, it's, it's a nice thinking of a thought, but, uh, we can solve that speed problem by just enforcement. And I think public safety is perfectly capable of doing it right now. So, those are the questions I have. Uh, what is Berkeley's input? And what is the overall impact to the transportation, the flow of traffic in this area? Not only under normal circumstances, but other adverse weather conditions, road closures, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Anyone else?
So, you know, Coolidge was just redone in Berkeley and they still haven't decided if that was a good decision or not. So, here we're talking about doing something, you know, these are very close streets. The other, um, big difference though is that eleven mile is residential. So, you have to think about the impact on those homes or like what happens on garbage day. Um, I just think there is like a lot that needs to be figured out about whether that, what that accomplishes. And, um, the crosswalk at eleven in Scotia. You know, like I said, I grew up here and I went to high school in Berkeley and lived in Scotia. So, when I was fourteen, fifteen, I was playing Frogger to cross the street. And it just shocked me that it's still like that. And when I have my kids in a stroller and I'm playing Frogger to cross. I mean, we have a high school that kids can't get to, um, unless they basically cross the two lane road to get there. If you live on, you know, Wyoming or Humber, Huntington or Meadow Crest, any of those. I mean, you're not going to go to Woodward and you're not going to go to Coolidge to get to school. You're, you're running across that street. So, I think that there's a huge opportunity to make, um, like a pretty big safety issue there. And also it might help reduce speeding. It might help reduce traffic just to have a light that stops people. Right now, it's a pretty long, you know, from Coolidge to Woodward. I think it's a little over a mile. It's a long way without a light, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to echo her sentiments. I live close to that area and I have my almost driving teenager with me. And I always tell her, this is going to be your most difficult left turn. And I always tell her, look how many times you have to go this way, this, this way, this way. It's just when you think it's good, somebody else comes out of Mortensen. It's a very dangerous corner. And then, um, she brought up, uh, Berkeley, but also Oak Park recently did the road diet on nine mile. They, they reduced four lanes to one. And it did change the character of that road. And it slowed things down, so it might be worth, um, asking them their experience of it, studying that. Uh, but we, we definitely could use something at that space. It's, it's dangerous. And I see the kids crossing all the time and, um, that's, that's concerning, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public participation. Uh, Jill?
I just had a question, really. Um, in the photo or the graphic you have here on the right, it's showing bike lanes there. Is that just...
So, that was out of the joint project that Oak Park and Berkeley and Huntington Woods did that, that recommended a lane repurposing but putting in bike lanes. So, that's out of that plan, but we are not recommending bike lanes.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought. So, um, yeah, no, I'm, uh, in favor of doing something there to, to reduce speed. And I think four to three, I mean, we're talking about, you know, she just mentioned nine mile. I think it was like four to, you know, they moved it to a one or two lane, I believe, right? Um, I, I think four to three is, is a reasonable kind of diet there. It's not, we're, we're not really blocking tra, you know, impeding the flow of traffic. Um, so, I'm in support of it.
Thanks, Jill. Jill?
Um, I think the, the crosswalks are definitely needed on eleven mile, definitely at Scotia. Um, and eleven mile, sometimes I think closer to Coolidge, but yet Scotia's close enough in some respect because when the kids are trying to get there to go down Berkeley to get to school, they could have already crossed at Scotia and, and done that. So, whether there's one that's needed at Meadow Crest, I think was the other place that they talked about putting it in. That's a possibility. Both in Berkeley and in Huntington Woods, eleven mile road is strictly residential with the exception of the corner at Woodward and the cor, and Coolidge, um, in both directions. And I do listen to what Jay is saying with, um, trash collection and especially westbound buses going by Huntington Woods and stopping several places on eleven mile road as to whether it will interfere with traffic flow or not. But there would be a center turn lane if you feel you can get into the center turn lane, if you can use it. Typically, you know, I don't know whether you can, whether somebody's coming the other direction. But I think a better study, I think we need to look at it. But I think a better study, you know, should be done if we do go on a road diet. But I definitely think we need the crosswalks.
Thanks, Gail. Rick?
Uh, I, I agree with the comment that we can't do anything until we understand what Berkeley is looking at and wants to do. But it's something worthwhile we're gonna do.
Thanks, Rick. Blake?
Um, I, I think my sentiments, uh, are echoed in what Gail and Jill had said. Nothing further.
Thanks, Blake. Chris?
Yeah, um, yes, somebody that lives on Kingston, uh, right behind Reynolds Park. Um, I'm, I'm definitely familiar with the, the lack of crosswalks and seeing folks from Berkeley and of course Huntington Woods using that park in particular. And of course Scotia, that, uh, as well. And, and of course, even from a driving perspective, trying to make a right or especially a left off of Meadow Crest or, or Scotia or even Newport is, is troublesome at best. Um, especially in the rush hour traffic morning. So, crosswalks at a minimum, um, for sure. And, and just looking at, you know, I think somebody made a point. The majority of the buildings on eleven mile are residential. So, when you look at, you know, uh, and I'm a casual observer of real estate. So, when you look at the home prices on eleven mile, on Berkeley and Huntington Woods, they're the, usually the lowest priced homes in both communities. So, if, you know, one factor is if you had a road diet type of factor, maybe that would affect home values for those homeowners and so forth. So, uh, I definitely think that's something that definitely should be looked at.
Thanks, Chris. Um, yeah, I agree. I, I, it's shocking to me that eleven mile still is the way it is. Um, I mean, it, the fact that there's not a crosswalk at Scotia blows my mind. Um, one at Scotia and Meadow Crest seems aggressive. Scotia seems to make a lot of sense to me. Um, I mean, I think the Coolidge road diet north of eleven mile in Berkeley is a, a completely different conversation. Um, you know, the, the bicycle lanes there, every time I turn in, turn right into a business, I feel like I'm going to kill somebody coming up, you know, behind me. I, I think that was a disaster. Uh, eleven mile wouldn't necessarily be that. Uh, so I, I would be fully in support of it. Um, the only real argument I've ever heard about it is, is, is trash collection. You know, maybe the buses, uh, I don't know if the bus routes...
Both of the transit and trash collections are, are important factors to consider on the, the decision. And it's interesting because I worked with Berkeley about fifteen years ago and they wanted to make eleven mile a three lane road. And they kept it out of the plan because the Huntington Woods planning commission was against it. So, they didn't put it in the plan, but they always kind of, some of the commissioners wished they had put it in the plan and can, so, consider that too. So, you need to some, whatever you want to do, you get it started in the plan and get those partnerships going on with Berkeley or, or Oak Park or something.
Well, and the fact that it's, it's, as it's been mentioned, completely residential. Um, I, it's no doubt in my mind that it's a source of revenue for the city, but it's not enough. I don't see enough people getting there. I, I see people going forty, fifty miles an hour down there. And eleven mile's damn near a residential street there. So, I, I think absolutely something has to happen there. Um, I do have one kind of question or, or comment. Uh, on this, uh, the page with the street recommendations in, in regard to the bike routes. I mean, there's a ton of bicyclists in, in Huntington Woods, ton of people walking. Uh, existing planned signed bike routes, the dotted yellow lines and then the, uh, planned shared lane bike markings. I guess I don't get it, uh, in, in a neighborhood like this. Um, I, I don't know what benefit that would be if, to, to spend the money or, or the effort to do either of those things. I mean, this is essentially a big giant subdivision. So, I, I guess unless there's something I'm missing, and maybe that's a, a broad question, is what, what good would that do us?
Yeah, I think having like kind of slower streets can kind of help, uh, bicyclists find the right route in your community. Um, and having that wayfinding signage helps them determine like which way is a good way to go. But I can understand too, like, yeah, a lot of the streets in Huntington Woods are similar. So, people can kind of choose which way they want to go.
Yeah, I'm ju, just curious if, if I was missing something? All right, thank you.
And I will say the eleven mile on the map here, it needs to be updated because I think it is showing a bike lane there. So, we can take that out.
Okay.
On both sides of the street, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Just, just so that you, you know, a little bit more about this. The, as Brad alluded to, this road diet's been on the table for twenty years, every bit of it. And it was even on the table when we did, redid eleven mile road. Um, part of the things and the benefits that you get to this is, is that obviously, whether it's the intended consequences or not intended consequences, you slow traffic down. So, what happens on Tuesday morning is the, does it outweigh the Tuesday morning trash collection? Or the three times a day, you know, five minute stops for the buses? That's something that we're going to have to consider. But the actual reality of that is, is that it will slow things. It typically enhances property values to Chris's point because now you have more space in front of that and the houses that are normally there with twenty-five feet plus the right of way, which is admittedly smaller in that area and traffic going supposedly going thirty miles an hour. Um, the distance that creates by adding to that would absolutely, uh, it would be logical. I don't have any data to support that, but it would be logical that it might help home values on that. The other thing is, is that we have had cursory conversations along the way with Berkeley about the crosswalks. Um, Berkeley right now is taking the position that until they see what happens with the Coolidge, that they're not wanting to jump into another one until they see what happens with that. Having said that, there's two completely different characters between Coolidge's commercial corridor and eleven mile's residential cor, you know, corridor. So, there are some things that have to be, but this has been going back and forth and conversations are and have been had with Berkeley over this for years. Um, the indication would be is that they might be interested in doing something jointly. But at this point in time, they're waiting to see what happens on Coolidge and see whether that's a, a state. I will tell you that, um, when that first started and when they first did that, it was a nightmare. There was no doubt that it was a problem getting across and people were bottlenecking right in the intersection of eleven mile and Coolidge. Um, traffic does seem to flow a lot smoother than it did originally with this. People find alternative ways to go and alternative ways to travel. Um, but I think that that's, that's part of it. There, there is a backstory to this. This has been going on for a long, long time. The impetus for putting it in the plan is that it gives us some direction to at least continue to explore these possibilities. The crosswalks, like everybody else, and here I echo their sentiments, that, you know, my kids went to, uh, Ber, you know, they went to, uh, Berkeley High School. And getting across eleven mile was always a challenge. I always really liked getting that text, "I made it." So, that's, that's one of the things. So, I, I, I think that's something that we definitely should pursue. From a planning standpoint, it makes sense to do and safety wise, it makes sense to do. And it was as Gail was saying too, is that, you know, you've got a mile, mile and a quarter there without any way of getting across. And people are absolutely not going to walk to Woodward and they're absolutely not going to walk to Coolidge. So, somewhere in between, we need to address this. So, putting that in the master plan is a impetus of, that's the plan. That's, that's where we want to get to and how we get there is going to be determined by our action orders.
Mike, can I add something to that?
Yeah, please.
Um, I think when we study eleven mile road, I think it's important, if we do traffic counters or whatever we do, that we need to do it when the eleven mile road bridge over I-75 is open because we currently have a different traffic, traffic flow, in my opinion, down eleven mile road because I-75 eleven mile bridge is closed. So, that's one thing we need to do. And the other thing is, if I'm not mistaken, Huntington Woods used to have multiple days for trash collection and now we're all on Tuesday. You know, I remember the city was broken up. If I'm not mistaken, and Berkeley is broken up by zones, but if I'm not mistaken, the north side of eleven mile road also has a Tuesday trash collection day. So, one of the things to think about when you're talking about four lanes to three lanes and residential on both sides, getting trash collection, is working with the two cities in respect to when do they hit eleven mile road and not at the same time to try to do something about not flowing, slowing the traffic down so much that both lanes are closed and there's only a middle lane for trash, I mean, for driving.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I, I, I'm obviously passionate about the, the Scotia light thing. I mean, I, I think we are just fortunately lucky that, uh, you know, a kid hasn't gotten tagged by somebody late for work. And that's, that's what, if that happened tomorrow, we would have a stoplight there tomorrow. At, at the corner of Scotia and Nadine, every morning, we've got two cops, two security guard, two, uh, two crossing guards and a four-way stop. And we've got, you know, good luck kids, text me when you're there across eleven mile. It's, it's bananas. So, if there's any way to at least prioritize, you know, the road diet admittedly is, is probably a bigger conversation. I have yet to hear a single argument against putting a crosswalk in at Scotia. So, if there's any way to prioritize that, um...
And you could use like, uh, flashing beacons or other things so that there's... Because it improves pedestrian safety because you get a crosswalk, but they can still get hit, especially if it's four lanes. And the more you can do, you can't install a, you don't meet the warrants to get a full signal there because there's all these engineering warrants you have to meet and we wouldn't meet that. But you could get a, like a flashing beacon warrant or there are different types of signs and symbols that you could use there to really alert people to slow down or stop and let people cross.
You, are you sure you won't be able to meet the warrants if there's a school there?
I think it needs a light. I mean...
It might meet the warrants for a hog, I know.
Because you have to have a certain volume of crossing right in the crosswalk, not with, like, within blacks, but it's like...
Yeah.
Even, even Catawba and Berkeley looked at it. We did a study for Coolidge and said the road diet, um, we were against the road diet because we thought the volumes were too high. So, but then they hired somebody else that found differently. It was kind of borderline, but, um, even at Catawba, um, it was much higher volumes and it still didn't meet the warrants to get it.
I, I guess what I want to, I want to make sure is that this, the crosswalk, I don't want that lumped into a road diet. Everybody loses their mind when they hear road diet. And it becomes a huge conversation of garbage trucks and, and bus lanes and all that kind of stuff. This is a completely different issue. This is a safety issue and it's insane that it hasn't happened yet. So, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Can you, I, I, we'll open up briefly again, but can, uh, can you come back and state your name? And, uh, oh, you are, we've already got her name on our computer.
We do, but I still don't have her on camera, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, can you come back up?
We won't be able to tell for the minutes.
Sorry.
So, to your point, I just wanted, I just wanted a very clear, like, point of clarification. Can you have the crop, can you have a light there without the road diet? Like, that's just not very clear to me. Can that exist?
I don't think we have that answer today.
But I probably can't, it's all dependent. You have to demonstrate a certain number of pedestrians would go there to warrant, you had different lev, levels of signal. To get like a full signal, it's a pretty high volume you have to meet because when you put a signal in, crashes go up. So, that's one of the, the balances you, you have to do. And there's a state standard and the national standard of what you have to, the warrant you have to meet. And if you don't meet that warrant and if somebody's hit there, then you're liable. So, it's a pretty high warrant to get a full signal, to do flashing beacons or other things like that is a lower warrant.
Okay, thank you.
And you could do that without...
I have one more question.
I think one of the other things too that should be noted is where they're showing the potential crosswalks, which would be like, uh, Henley and, uh, or offset on Scotia and offset on Meadow Crest. I think part of the thing there with the light that also becomes problematic is because you have the fire department coming out of there and turning right, right into a traffic light, um, that can also be problematic. a traffic light, that can also be problematic, because there's not enough time for people to see them coming out of there. So I think that it's, would it be safe to say then, Brad, that we could certainly explore the crosswalks? And obviously, it's easier to get across three lanes than four lanes, but that would still change a place where we might put a crosswalk. It just might make it easier for people to get across. So we would want to put in there as an item to explore the crosswalks, one. Two, unless you're dead set against it, but separately, explore the potential of a road diet as a safety feature for that. But it's separate, like not where the road diet's tied into the crosswalks. And third, explore the possibility of a light somewhere, or a flashing light somewhere on there too, because we have to have that. And with the crosswalks, we've got to have a partner in Berkeley.
Yep.
So that's, that's a different conversation with Berkeley than a road diet. So it's, it's a, that would be a lot easier conversation.
I mean, maybe in, I don't want to go down too far a rabbit hole, but obviously, I'm a little hot on this issue.
Yeah.
The, you know, maybe school zone of some, you know, there's, that happens all the time, you know, it's thirty miles an hour, it drops down to twenty-five, it's a little sad, but...
Between seven-thirty and eight-thirty.
Maybe that could be incorporated if we can't get a light there.
All, all those are things that we, all those are things that we could look at.
Alright, Chris, sorry.
Yeah, one last question I know has been brought up with the bus routes. Is there any way we can talk to SMART and see what, what bus stops are actually being used? Because primarily the ones I see are the ones right at Coolidge and Eleven Mile, and the one right at Woodward and Eleven Mile, both east and westbound. I don't generally see buses stop in the middle.
You know, here's the thing. There, the one that's right out in front of the police station, between City Hall and Public Safety, regularly has people using it. It's hard to see because it's sandwiched in between City Hall and that, so unless you're there...
Right.
I mean, I see it every day, obviously. But that one is also used. But even if you're doing that, I mean, the, the emphasis for that would not be to put a fast bus there.
Right.
But, you know, if you're putting a bus that has one stop in between, so you're looking at one at Coolidge, which is already there, you're looking at one at Woodward, which is already there, and we have one that's already there, and as far as the amount of times or traffic that it's used, it's used the same time as everything else, when people go to work, when people come from work. That's how, that's where people do.
I just know there's a couple other more bus stops.
Yeah, I would just say, I don't want to belabor this too much, and we work with SMART all the time, but if there were, say, two crosswalks or signalized, we would work with SMART, because SMART would move their bus stops to be by the crosswalk, because it's not safe for their transit riders to be crossing four miles of Eleven Mile randomly either, and they'd rather have their bus stops where the crosswalks are.
A cohesive effort is going to have to be had to make this work right.
Okay.
Okay.
One other thing I wanted to note before we move on to for the Eleven Mile, like studying that further, I think something that could be helpful is doing a kind of a pilot study. As part of the study is showing, like putting up cones and kind of narrowing it just by putting up temporary things in the way, so that people can be educated and kind of test it out before you kind of commit to anything. And that's sometimes a good way to do it for a couple of weeks, to see how traffic does flow. And that's something we can provide some more information on too, that other cities have done, and before they commit to doing a lane repurposing project.
I might go throw some cones out on Eleven Mile tonight.
Obviously, you have to educate people prior to even doing that, so they know it's coming, but just an idea to throw out there.
Got it. Thank you.
So this is the future land use map that we're showing here. Primarily, future land use in the city is stable and reflects existing conditions, with the exceptions of some key areas. So we identified, most of the area you see here is in orange, and that's the areas to preserve. We did ask people at, at the workshop to kind of identify areas to enhance. So there was, those are like lower grade upgrades, like upgrading facades and upgrading streetscapes, and then areas to invest. So that's where you see more redevelopment opportunities occurring. Areas to enhance is, you know, primarily along some of the main streets, like Eleven Mile and Woodward. And then areas to invest in, we have targeted areas along Coolidge, that, that commercial strip that's south of, I think Lincoln there. And then we also identified all of Woodward as invest, but property owner interest obviously will determine which properties would end up being targeted for reinvestment there. And then we also showed the city campus area potentially as being an invest area as well.
What does street enhancement mean? For example, Lincoln.
So the street enhancement is those areas for, opportunities for enhancements like streetscapes and green infrastructure. So that's why we targeted those areas. But again, all of these are subject to change. We also had the areas to enhance around kind of the golf course. People at the workshop identified that areas, they want to be kind of maintained better, so that's why we also listed that area too.
In Huntington Road area, by the zoo, it appears, also.
That's always a fun point of contention.
And now we're going to show you some redevelopment opportunities for Woodward and Coolidge. And just so you know, we did, we met earlier, or sorry, late July, with some property owners, Oakland County, MEDC, and had a conversation with them about redevelopment opportunities, funding resources, CIB Planning, who we've partnered with on this project. They led that conversation, and they're doing the economic development strategy for the master plan update. So they're providing more information on that, so you'll see more of that once the draft master plan comes in front of you. But just to kind of give you some background on what you're going to see with some of the proposed recommendations here. So Woodward is fairly unwalkable. There's a lack of buffering from the traffic. And these are some best practices that we showed you last time, including some mixed-use buildings, creating opportunities for outdoor dining, making it more walkable. And so we created some sketches, again, this is just showing existing. This is not meant to be a specific area of Woodward, but rather just displaying an example of what could be along here. So improvements will really, again, depend on the property owner interest and resources that are available. So again, as you can see here, there's a lot of expansive parking areas along Woodward, excessive driveways. So we have showed some phased improvements that could happen. The first phase would focus on streetscape improvements, improving access to the Woodward service drive. This is something that we heard during that property owner meeting that we held in July, that service drive is in really bad shape, and even people finding it, people will miss the drive, and they'll have to kind of circle back around and come back to it. And then there's really no buffer. There's just that little concrete buffer between Woodward and the access drive and then the, the buildings. So creating a landscape buffer there and between the commercial area would really help enhance the area. Widening the sidewalks, this could only happen then if you created parallel parking along there instead of doing the angled parking, so you'd allow a little bit more room to create wider sidewalks closer to the commercial buildings. And that would create more opportunities for gathering spaces, outdoor dining. One of the things that we heard from people is that they want to see more restaurants in the commercial areas. So having wider sidewalks there would really help improve that area and kind of target areas for those opportunities for outdoor gathering. And then the next phase is showing facade improvements and opportunities for some additions to buildings, like adding a second story to like a one-story building. And then we also have opportunities for retrofitting the parking lots to be, have more green infrastructure, targeting some parking areas for shared parking, electric vehicle parking, also including bike parking along there, and just making it more kind of multimodal friendly, and then also enhancing transit amenities along here too. And then the last phase, we show a little bit more build-out and infill development happening, more shared parking areas. We also incorporated a designated rapid, bus rapid transit lane, and this aligns with the recent RTA mobility-oriented development study that MKSK actually worked on. And this, we kind of just show how that would look like, and then ultimately help influence and promote investment along Woodward. And I guess before we move on, do you guys have any questions about the Woodward concepts?
I'd like to ask, hink a question.
Sure.
The parking spaces that are angular in front of the Woodward properties, along with the poor maintenance of the drives going into them and the weeds growing all over the sidewalk, does that belong to the property owners, or is that not MDOT's property?
That is MDOT's property.
And what do we do to get MDOT to do anything about taking care of their property?
We very recently had meetings with MDOT about that, and at this point in time, we still are having ongoing discussions. MDOT, we're not in MDOT's five-year plan for revisiting that area. They typically put out five or ten-year plans, and that area is not part of that. So currently, the city manager and I have both been in discussions as to what we can do to improve our appearance on Woodward, and what kind of funding might be available from MDOT if they're not willing to do it, what kind of, if any contributory funds are available if they're not willing to do it. And then alternatively, what can we do to match what, quite frankly, Birmingham has? And there, you know, there's other communities that have been able to upgrade their frontage and upgrade their facades, but to undertake it ourselves at our cost is huge. I mean, the, the monies to redo that particular area is great. The drawing that you see on the screen right now that's shown by MKSK would be incredible for us to have something like that. And the BRT lane would be absolutely great. There's a lot of buy-in from a lot of parties to get from point A to point B there. So we do have that. We're fortunate enough that MKSK was in on the ground floor on that and brings to us their expertise in that area. But we're ways away from having that. But I will tell you that there are currently and have been discussions with MDOT about what we can do to make those spaces better.
What is BRT?
Bus Rapid Transit.
Bus lane?
Bus Rapid Transit.
Bus Rapid Transit.
But that's what it is, the bus lane? Okay.
Yeah, I had a long talk with Mark Woland Weaver about the Woodward facade and what it looked like, and, you know, MDOT, and I know he was calling somebody, because when you look across the street to Royal Oak and to see their frontage and what it looks like versus what our frontage is, the fortunate thing for them is their property grass runs to the street, and they don't have that ugliness and that parking and whatever else. And if that's what it's going to take to make our side of the street prettier, you know, then I don't know whether we can get that land, but it, it doesn't show well for Huntington Woods, and it reflects that people think it's the city and not MDOT that isn't taking care of it and making a better statement on Woodward.
Right, and, and to that...
And it's not, and I know that.
Right. And, and to that end, even though it's not our responsibility, we still just recently, the city manager has authorized, and we went ahead and did it, a cleanup of all the grass and, you know, debris and everything that was going on on there, just for that specific reason. You know, we all live here, you know, we still have to look at that. So I think that we've, we've got a lot of action from Mark on that front. The person that you were talking, that he might have mentioned you that he was calling, did call, and that was our end to getting a meeting with MDOT. So we have at this point in time had that. There's now a mapping out of strategy, because if they don't have us on their immediate future plan, and we need something done sooner than that, other than just trying to maintain it, the other things that we've done is we've cold patched areas, and even though cold patched and concrete are not essentially compatible, it works for a period of time. And if for nothing else, that makes it smoother, gets it out, we had a, we had put the best foot forward that we could for Dream Cruise, for, you know, when we have all these people in town. The goal would be is to keep that, like that, all the time, not just for Dream Cruise. But we just basically got into a plan with that, so. We will keep addressing it.
Thank you.
But also, it's, MDOT and Huntington Woods are not going away. We're going to have to have continuing conversations with that.
Just one question. The, the parking in front of the building, is that something that we can zone? As far as, or is, my question is, do we, do the, the buildings need that parking to satisfy the parking for each building? Or is that, can that actually...
When we review new buildings or new structures or additions or whatever, they have to be able to contain their parking on their property.
Right.
Anything in that particular MDOT right-of-way is a bonus.
Okay.
But they don't have, that's public parking. They don't have a right to count it as for their business specifically.
Typically, MDOT's position on Woodward is all the parking in the MDOT right-of-way should be removed. They've been gradually allowing it, but if, like, the plan here to go from angled to parallel, they would support that. Their preference would be there's no parking there.
Okay. Honestly, that's, that would be my preference, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah, are we at, are we at a stopping point, or are we going to wrap, wrap up Coolidge, and then we'll open it back up?
Yeah, yeah, we're almost done. So again, this is showing Coolidge. This is a smaller business cluster, which is essentially the Rite Aid and the Chase Bank. And so there's some newer sidewalks here, but there's also some excess, excessive driveway openings between those two business areas and large parking areas, and then also underutilized property, and then minimal landscaping and buffering, especially at the corners. So this is just the existing conditions of that, showing the aerial. And then we have Phase One here, showing streetscape improvements and access management. The first phase of changes could include things like gateway landscaping and street trees to enhance the area, and minimizing the width of those access drives, and also aligning the access drives too, to set it up for Phase Two, and aligning the, kind of, so it'd be more like shared parking between those areas. So we have here showing two to three-story mixed-use development where the Chase Bank currently is. You know, they could remain at this location, but maybe there's an opportunity for reinvestment here, and locating the couple buildings closer to the street, having shared parking in that lot, potentially having a mixed, mixed-use buildings there, maybe with apartments above. And then we also show in the lower right-hand corner here, some townhomes, which is where the Chase ATM parking lot is, which is a very underutilized property. And there's just that small ATM there that could be relocated to the other site pretty easily. And then you could do some, some other housing in that lot. And just to note too, as part of the economic development strategy, we'll be including resources, funding opportunities, based on discussions that we've had with MEDC and Oakland County. That will be part of your, kind of like your action plan and your master plan, so you have some ideas of how to proceed forward with some of these opportunities. And then just really quick, I want to show you, the DII consultants provided me a summary of their plan progress so far. So they're, they completed their assessment, which included a visioning session with the city commissioners. They released a survey that got over 550 responses. They held focus groups and one-on-one discussions. And then they'll be coming back to the city next week to discuss their report findings and recommendations. And then MKSK will also be part of that discussion. And then MKSK will also be part of that discussion, too. So we'll make sure that we're aligning our recommendations and incorporating that into the master plan. And just some next steps. So we'll be revising the recommendations, kind of based on our discussion tonight, and then continuing drafting the master plan document. And then the working session and workshop will be sometime in November to present that draft master plan to you. And that's all we have for tonight. So if there's anything else you have questions on, happy to answer.
I think we'll open it up for one more public participation and then go around the planning commission?
Easy.
Always first.
We'll open it up for public participation.
Yes. Just a couple of general concerns. Number one, in the course of the discussion this evening, there have been several comments made about, well, other cities are doing it. And it doesn't matter what the topic is, other cities. And I want to throw in a cautionary tale here, that even though other cities may be doing it, we have to be careful to remember that just because it worked for them does not necessarily mean it's going to work for here. In marketing, there's a, same, the four Ps, four Ps of marketing, product, place, product, and promotion. So the example is a tube of toothpaste at the CVS at 11 and Coolidge is different from that same tube of toothpaste at 13 Woodward, because you have a different place and a different residential area. So you can't, you have to be very careful when you consider that just because somebody else is doing it, doesn't mean necessarily we should do it without due diligence. So I want to throw that as a cautionary thing, not just to jump in. There. Number two, and this is a general comment, regarding improvements along Ludlow and Scotia around the Rackham Golf Course and even around the Detroit Zoo, we always remember, that's City of Detroit property. So just as when you're talking about doing something in 11 Mile Road or Coolidge, you have to coordinate with other cities there, along the golf course and the zoo, we have to coordinate with the City of Detroit. And that may be a whole nother issue. So other than that, I think this was a good start. And again, a caution about some of the data that we've seen here from focus groups and other things, that's a good start. But we still need to tighten up, to take into account specific. Not only how many people participated, age, income. You need that information before we can say that X number of percentage of the population favor this or don't favor that. Without that information, age and income especially, I have to question the validity of the data. Other than that, good start. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
... 1-0-0, Coolidge, Al. From here, really progress on the management. I find that during the rest of the discussion on Woodward Avenue-
...
Building owners weren't mentioned once. When the city was trying to no longer remove snow in that area, and we called the county, we called MDOT and asked about that property, they were quite willing to come and pull all that up and put grass in, by the way. And the owners were upset, because they would have lost that, that parking. Those owners also have a responsibility for that area. And while I think it's very nice that the city went out and cleaned it up, we have to remember that that's MDOT property that those business owners are making use of. And yet, nobody ever incorporates their responsibility into the discussion on Woodward. So I think you need to look at that, not just in terms of the city and MDOT, but those business owners as well.
Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to make another quick plea for kind of data transparency and integrity and inclusion. I'm an academic researcher, so all my work is around collecting data and analyzing data. And I understand some of the limitations with the data that was collected in the survey that was administered. But, you know, with all surveys, you want to make sure that it's, the data is generalizable, right? So that you can take, draw conclusions based on the smaller sample and apply it and draw conclusions about the larger population. And one pretty straightforward way to do that is to make sure that the respondents to the survey are representative of the community, right? So if you know that half of Huntington Woods are men, half are women, then we need to make sure that half of the respondents are men and half of the respondents are women. So those are just some simple things that I think would help instill some confidence in the results, and also instill greater public confidence in the recommendations and the plans that are made based on those results. So I think, that's why I think the issue with social demographics is really, really critical.
And just, we did have demographic-
Okay.
-data in the survey, just so you know. There was gender, race, age included. And if someone was a resident, business owner, works at a business, visits Huntington Woods or other, we did not have income in there, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jessica Lynn Edwards. I live at 10-815 Portman. One thing I was thinking about, looking at the streetscape improvements, is the potential for the crosswalk, the lights at Lincoln on 11 Mile to be longer, like the amount of time, the light timing, because it is really hard to cross there. And even on foot, as an able-bodied person, you have to basically sprint to cross. And I know that a lot of people enjoy this area, because you can get to Royal Oak or to Ferndale or downtown on the bike or bus or whatever. And it is definitely, if you were not an able-bodied person, it's very hard to cross safely at Woodward. And then another thing I was thinking about with the potential for a, some sort of blinking something on 11 Mile, maybe at Scotia, is during school commute time, could there be a crossing guard? Even if we don't get a full light, can there be the potential for a crossing guard so that kids can get to Berkeley High School safely without going all the way to Woodward or Coolidge? So those were the main things.
Thank you. Okay. Gail, closing comments?
I think we're on a good start. I have a question to both Hank and anybody else in looking at Phase Two of the Coolidge Highway Development in the infill. Chase Bank owns big parcel on Woodward and also the one on Coolidge. And the property that is potentially, or suggested to possibly be townhouses, which was just a parking lot with an ATM. If I remember correctly, Chase Bank said that is the busiest ATM machine they have in existence. You know, it has more than anything else. Now, I don't think it needs a big parking lot in order to be maintained, but I wonder, in looking at these, have we talked to Chase at all about some of the plans that we are considering? I don't know that they'd ever consider going to one branch, but that spot's going to need an ATM. Woodward doesn't, you know, with multiple ATMs, doesn't get the traffic that Coolidge gets, for whatever reason. So I'm just making that known. And I remember being at that meeting where they said that was their busiest ATM machine that they had around.
Tell me if I'm wrong, Hank, but this is purely conceptual at this point. We wouldn't have even started conversations like that.
We have to, I do have some information that I could probably add to that a little bit. Gail's right, to the extent that they said that this is one of the busiest ATMs. There's a possibility that they may like to add another ATM in that particular site, which presents stacking issues, special land use requests, which would come before you anyway if they were going to do something like that. They're very happy with the performance of both of their Chase locations in the City of Huntington Woods. And as of our last conversation with them, they had no plans on closing either one of them.
Okay. I didn't think so, but-
So that's, that's where that is. That doesn't mean that can't change tomorrow, but that-
I think that ATM needed a, had a zoning board of appeals decision on their planting or something like that that they did in the parking lot that I'm remembering.
Hey, Hank, can I direct a question? So forgive me, this is something that everybody knows, but does Chase actually own that land in Huntington Woods?
They do.
It seems so strange. Like, why do we not just lease it to them and-
We don't own it.
I get it, but how does one, like, does Rite Aid own the land that they have?
The company that Rite Aid leases from owns the land.
Blake, you could probably make Chase a very generous offer.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm sure with enough zeros, they'd be happy to talk to you.
And I think our thoughts, too, just to add, like, that we weren't thinking that Chase would move from here, that they could relocate in, like, one of those storefronts there in the corner, and they'd have a more modernized building, because I think their building must be from the 60s or the 70s that's currently there. It's, looks like it's pretty outdated. And then even the ATM could be relocated on the other site potentially. So it's not saying that it would go away, but, you know, there's still opportunities to kind of rework it, so it's just more modernized.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
No additional comments.
Blake?
I don't think I have any additional comments.
Chris?
No additional comments from me.
I'm good.
I think at this-
I have one quick question.
You go right ahead.
So we had an RFP, we've talked to you, we've had community input and so forth, so we've tried to address, because Huntington Woods is largely developed, and keep things the way they are, enhance and so forth, and so we've tried to focus on the things that were in the RFP. Is there anything that you think of should be addressed in the master plan or you think we missed? We thought we've covered everything, but want to make sure we didn't miss some.
I'm curious as to, I think this was part of this, but the results from the focus group meetings, was that part of-
From the DEI plan?
I think so.
That's, that will be coming. I don't, I don't know those yet. They haven't talked to me yet, so. But they're going to be talking to us next week, the city and MKSK.
And then Justin had some focus group meetings, too, didn't he?
Yeah, we had a focus group meeting with the property owners and Oakland County MEDC with CIB planning. And that was to talk about those redevelopment opportunities and economic development strategies.
Okay. We don't need a motion to close, do we?
Yeah, I just, there was just one other question on this. So is there any, so I'd almost like to get a summary of the direction from the planning commission for the benefit of MKSK. So you want to move forward with the crosswalks on 11 Mile Road. You want, as a subnote to that, to maybe put in there, explore the road diet, when and if that becomes down the road here. You want to explore crossing guards or other safety measures to make sure that the children can get across from point A to point B. That was pretty much the 11 Mile thing, except for the development of the City Hall. And I'm not sure if we got a really clear direction on that.
Well, I almost wonder if we should just kind of go, so I mean, the stormwater thing was big, right? Like, that's something we wanted, we wanted definitely for the minute.
So that should be in there, yeah.
I mean, I think there was very little interest in exploring the City Hall. That was, that was 16%. Does anybody argue that that seems like not really a thing to pursue?
Okay. And I guess I want to see if we're separating the two issues. Are we separating City Hall from the need to repair, replace the public safety building? And if so, is it the recommendation to upgrade our public safety facilities and not sell the property? Or, I mean, where would you like, what's your thoughts about where to go with this?
I mean, I guess I'm sort of speaking for myself here, and tell me if anybody disagrees here, but I think, you know, looking at the survey responses as a guide, it's not really a surprise to me. So we sort of scrapped the idea of selling off City Hall. You know, relocating DPW, I think people don't understand what that really means. That, to me, is, I'm shocked that it was as high as 22%. I think that idea is crazy. When people really understood what that meant for their day-to-day lives here, they would reject it and it would be zero, I think. We absolutely, in my opinion, need to fund more for public safety, city campus, and DTW. And, you know, 32% of people say, believe it is. So I would love to explore, you know, out of this page, just explore further funding to pump some money into the city buildings.
And renovating the building-
Yeah.
-to the extent that we need to.
I think so.
Rather than replace.
And I think we got, have to make sure everyone understands, leave things as they are today is not an option.
That's factual.
Because they're literally falling apart.
Yet it's very popular.
I just, you know, just to be clear on this, too, is that City Hall is not in as bad a shape as public safety is. We have components. It's like buildings are forever, but components were out on a fairly predictable basis. That's a fact. The problem with public safety is that everything's wearing out at the same time. So we have everything from roofs on down to footings to storm backups to drainage issues to wall issues, bowling, stuff like that. So there would be an extensive amount of money put into that. But if it is, based on the information that we have and based on the information that you've got, it would be something that you would prefer to at least put in the master plan to be brought up again, because every meeting that we have, the public is certainly welcome to upgrades to the buildings and that, rather than replace the buildings and that. And in your mind, that selling off the property is not something that you would want to see in the plan?
I think one thing at the workshop, I saw people that say, just leave things the way they are. And I just said, have you been to the public safety building? And I described it in like Hank just did briefly, the problems that they have there. And they, wow, I had no idea if I would support renovating it if I knew. So that's the downside of a survey, because people get a survey, but there's no information exchanged. And I think when people, at least the ones I talked to, had more understanding what was going on there, or talked to somebody else who has been there, then they said, I had no idea, it looks good from the outside, and then they were supportive.
It's almost like you need, and I don't know if the police would be open to this, but like a video or photos showing what the conditions are. A visual, I think, would really help people, because we toured the inside of it and I was like shocked.
But, no, and I understand. And I think, but I guess what I'm asking for is, you can say that improvements to the Department of Public Works, improvements to the Department of Public Safety, improvements to the City Hall structures, those are all goals that could be in the master plan. And then to what extent they are, or to what extent they could be funded, that's a different, that's a different plan.
Yeah, I would like to lump all city-owned properties into, you know, investigate, you know, renovation and/or reconstruction of all city properties.
And I will tell you right now that we're redoing the parking lot, obviously, in City Hall, which is one of the reasons we're here.
Yeah.
So there's just improvements that-
But does that, does that angle make sense for the master plan?
Yeah. That's why we were just asking for clarification.
Yeah, anybody disagree with that?
I'm glad you brought it up, actually, because we kind of did gloss over it.
Well, it's something where we'd like a consensus, because for them to present the master plan and, boy, trying for us to pay them to present the master plan without being clear on the direction that we want to go, you know, would be remiss on our part.
Got to keep us focused, Hank. All right, and then we're skipping the lot coverage thing. We're really kind of addressing that from a stormwater perspective, right? We talked about the street recommendations. Do you need direction? I guess, this was my confusion on the bike lanes and stuff. I guess this is more, the 11 Mile is the more heated part.
And that's okay. That's okay.
I mean, I think, I think the 11 Mile, you know, road diet should be something we at least look at. I think it's worth investigating. The future land use, I don't know that, do you need direction on that piece?
I think it's more just like, did we get it right? And are there other, is there anything else, like, we might have missed there?
I don't see any. I think it looks exactly, and I cannot tell you how much I love the end results or concepts of Woodward and Coolidge. I mean, that would just, you could wave a magic wand, that would change the city. It's awesome.
Yeah. Okay, good.
That's the benefit we have of being involved on the ground floor.
Yeah, that's, that would just be, I mean, it would change, like, people might actually want to invest in that crappy little strip of Woodward.
Yeah, you could take, like, a C-minus property and turn it into a C-
And sometimes images like that can kind of get people excited and, like, want to be like, oh, yeah, I think making an investment makes sense and from the property.
Even the dentist office that redid that building, like, he did a nice job, but it's nothing crazy. It looks like the gem of Woodward right now, just because it's the only thing that's not.
He put a lot of money into it, and he actually used to be a tenant in one of the other buildings. And he wanted to go out on his own, and to his credit, he spent a lot of money putting that structure together. And he did a nice job. And he did a nice job, but the problem is, is that from our standpoint, if you don't get, you get piecemeal again. In other words, the, this property, and then, oh, yeah, five years later, this one does something else than this. And then there's no homogeneous, you know, to that. So that's, that's why the direction of Woodward is important, because once we know where we're going, then we can make ordinance changes, recommendations. And we were very proactive with our zoning ordinance, and I think they've looked at it. We have allowances for mixed use. We have allowances for additional height and how you get it. So we have tried to make it attractive for properties or people to come and buy it. The problem is, we don't own any of it.
Well, once Blake starts buying up Chase Bank, it'll be all set.
But, so that was one of my other questions, is, so then, is this nothing more than a pipe dream? If we have no authority to say, because I just assumed that every business that was operating within the confines of Huntington Woods were on some sort of a long-term lease situation? I didn't realize.
That's not the case.
So what, what do we do to incentivize, to the woman's comment earlier, they're making an improvement that they have yet to make?
Well, the idea is, is that we have to come up with ways to excite interest and make it worth somebody's while, whether it's ground field credits, whether it's tax increment financing, whether it's, whether grants, whatever might be available in order for somebody to do that. Because realistically, most, not all, but most of these properties on Woodward are owned, some of them are long paid for. So then, it would be harder to incentivize that, because they're already making money on the property with not putting anything into it. So we would have to make it so that they can realize a greater pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And that takes, that takes some work. But until we put in the master plan what we want and what we're looking for, we can't even look to investors to get to our endgame. Ideally, both people converge at the end of the road and find that it's a mutually agreeable thing, and it goes forward. But without a plan, you don't have anything to talk to them about.
And we do have our economic development person, we're going to present that tonight, but we just got it from him today.
Today at four.
But a list of the strategies, we thought, it's not that bad to not give it to you yet, because we wanted to make sure you liked the ideas, and then get a reaction, and then we can say, all right, here's some ideas for the city, or to work with the county or the state to incentivize, because this, Hank says, some of these owners have owned the building for a lot, the money's coming in, they don't want to risk tearing it down and see what the market is, so you've got to have some incentives in there or see that it's worth, worth the investment.
Yeah, that's something that came up during our focus group meeting with, with MEDC in Oakland County, and they had, like, a lot, actually, really positive reaction. They're like, there's a lot of opportunity here, and there's a lot of different funding resources. So it's just a matter of, like, collaborating with those organizations and coordinating them, with them on a regular basis. And I think you will see definitely investment in the future, because...
And so you'll see that at our next meeting.
I think there's...
I thought they came up with some pretty good ideas, but I think they, it needs a lot of tweaking before it's ready for you to see it.
And I know, like, I talked with Justin, who's from CIB Planning, who is working on the development strategy chapter, and he said, there's a developer, like, right now, that he knows would be interested in Woodward. It's just a matter of, like, getting everything kind of ready to go, and making sure those, like, resources are there.
Yeah. You have to give them a hat rack to hang their hat on, and they typically will. Do you think that it would be right, Anne Marie, that we might be able to discuss Justin's recommendation, his notes and his concepts, at our next regular planning commission meeting, which would be on, I believe it's the 27th of this month?
Yeah, I can talk to him.
Okay, so if you have that, and we can get that going. So you will be receiving some more information at the regular planning commission meeting, specifically oriented towards Woodward and the businesses. We wouldn't have anything else ready by that time for them, so that would be the thing. So if that's okay with you, then I'd be happy to put that on the agenda for the planning commission, so that we have that information for them. And I'll make sure that I can notice the public as best as possible with that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
I think your page on top priorities are really the focus, and I think one we didn't discuss so much tonight, but it was there, and it was there in the 14-15 one, is again, looking, you know, we talked about stormwater, sustainability, road maintenance, water, et cetera. But one of the other issues is parks and recreation, and the building itself, this building that we're in. And the residents seem to, you know, have, 31 percent of them felt that parks and recreation opportunities were important. And I think it had a lot to do with both the building and opportunities.
You know, it's interesting, and you bring up a good point, Gail. Part of this, too, is that you have to remember, taking, putting it into context, the Parks and Rec opportunities serve a diverse section of the population. It serves everybody from seniors to little kids. So that's important. But out of that section, there is a fair amount of Huntington Woods that just doesn't use the Rec Center. So we would be looking for ways to attract people to use the Rec Center, maximize the use of the property. But if you take the 65 percent of the stormwater, everybody from all walks cared about that. So while it has a lower number, it doesn't mean that the people that are, that responded are any less passionate about the thing. And I think that, like, we have seniors using the Rec Center all the time. We have a really good senior outreach program. We have the gym, the basketball courts, you know, maybe there's ways to do that. The Parks and Rec has their own master plan, so, which, you know, MKSK has had, and I don't know to the extent they incorporated any of that into this, because it's a different master plan. But I think that what you, what you need to do is, you have the issues in your top summary of engagement property, summary of engagements in your top priorities, they're laid out, and I think we have to address what's laid out, and even if we incorporate part of the Parks and Rec master plan into that phase of that discussion.
Well, I think part of what one of the intentions was when they were talking about selling off the, the city hall and whatever else, and having that redeveloped, and having a builder come in and rebuild it and put something on top of it, whether it was going to be senior apartments or senior condos, or, you know, a park, a recreation center or something like that. People were looking for other options for activities also, and sometimes this building can't accommodate it. And I think that we have to work in close conjunction with the Recreation Department and their plans to try to see that it's met for all parts of the population. Because it doesn't seem that people want to have city hall redeveloped, but yet the opportunity is still here to see what can be done in this facility for everybody.
And we'll make sure that we're aligning with the Parks and Recreation master plan.
That would be great.
I think so. Anne Marie, do you have anything else?
No, I'm...
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You need your motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Hi.
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 As always.
We showed the meeting adjourned at 9:01.
Thank you.